Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Urban League of Portland's Forum for Portland City Commissioner. My name is Justice Raji. I am the Director of the Reimagine Oregon Project, and I will be tonight's moderator. Before we get started, I wanted to thank our community partners, Central City Concern, Impact Northwest, Northwest Pilot Project, Muslim Education Trust, Transition Projects, and co-hosting tonight's forum, as well as several others that will be happening this month and next. Without their efforts and support, tonight's event would not have been possible. I also want to highlight the importance of voting. Voting is not an every-four-year event. Every year, there are local elections, and they're just as important as our presidential and our federal elections. The deadline to register to vote in Oregon is October 18th. Democracy only works when we people vote, so get registered if you aren't and vote. Tonight, we will feature two candidates running for Portland City Commissioner, position three, Renee Gonzalez and Joanne Hardisty. These candidates are here to highlight their campaign proposals and answer questions, community questions as potential future Portland Commissioner. Although we hope tonight's forum will be exciting and informative, we also want it to be an orderly one. Here are a few ground rules for our candidates. Please remain muted if you are not answering a question. This is important for audio issues as well as video focus. Please do not forget this. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. We will ask you to deliver your opening statements in alphabetical order. Candidate Renee Gonzalez, then Commissioner Joanne Hardisty. When questions are asked, each candidate will have two minutes to respond with no rebuttals. There will be six questions tonight. We will begin in reverse alphabetical order, starting with Commissioner Hardisty, followed by Candidate Gonzalez, then alternate each question. After questions are complete, each candidate will have two minutes to deliver a closing statement. We will ask you to deliver your opening, pardon me, your closing statements in reverse alphabetical order, Commissioner Hardisty, then candidate Renee Gonzalez. Before, please be courteous and conscious of time and your fellow candidates. Throughout the forum, when speaking, if you are within thirty seconds of your allotted time, our staff will send you a notification. If you go overtime, we will send you a chat to let you know time is up. And with that, we can get started. And I'll begin with, beginning with opening statements. We will start in alphabetical order. Candidate Gonzalez, you have two minutes. Your time starts now.
Well, I would like to thank the Urban League for hosting tonight and for you all joining in in this important step in our democracy. Really fundamentally, I'm running because I'm deeply concerned about livability in the city we all love, and particularly focused on the impacts of crime and homelessness on families' ability to live here and build businesses and families here. I'm a fifth-generation Portlander on my mom's side of the family, on my dad's side of the family. They came up as migrant workers through South Texas, Spanish-speaking first, by the bootstraps folks. And I ended up here raising my family of three children with my wife, who is also Latina. Very much look forward to digging into the issues confronting Portland, confronting your communities. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Harst.
Thank you, candidate Gonzalez. Next up is Commissioner Hardisty. You have two minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you very much for the invitation this evening. I want to thank the President of the Urban League of Portland, Nikengay Harmon Johnson, and the Board Chair, also as well as the Vice Chair. It is, the Urban League, of course, is an institution in our community. Why am I running? I am running for reelection to continue the incredible work that we've been able to accomplish in spite of a worldwide pandemic, in spite of worldwide racial justice movement, in spite wildfires and severe weather. We are on path. And what I want to do is make sure all of us come back from the pandemic, and just not those of us who have resources to be able to come back. This pandemic has had a tragic impact on folks, and I look forward to us continuing that conversation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Now we will begin the question portion of our forum in reverse alphabetical order. For the first question, we will start with Commissioner Hardisty. The Portland City Charter's Commission has proposed changes to the city charter, which would drastically change how the city is structured. Critics of the current structure say that the current system is antiquated for the size of the city, does not allow for adequate constituent engagement with city leadership, and it forces elected officials to manage bureaus without having sufficient experience. The Charter Commission proposed a ballot measure to increase the council's size from five members to twelve, hire a city administrator to oversee the operation of the city bureaus, and change the voting method from a pick-one to a ranked-choice voting method, to name a few. Do you support the city reform ballot measure? Please explain why or why not.
As the only member of this conversation who actually served on the last Charter Commission, I saw what it looked like when government and elected leaders interfered with the independence of the Charter Commission. So as I ran in 2018, I made a promise to voters. I made a promise we would have a diverse Charter Commission, that they would be funded, that they would have appropriate staff, and they would have the ability to talk to Portlanders all over this great city. We did that. We put together a very diverse Charter Commission. We gave them, actually, the Charter gives them the independence to talk to voters about anything they want to talk to voters about. They developed a packet. That packet is now in front of voters, and voters will get to decide whether or not this is the appropriate change at this time. I find it the height of arrogance for elected leaders and other certified smart people to try to replace their best thinking with twenty community members who dedicated two years to this effort. My opinion is really irrelevant. I have no desire as an elected official to try to tip the scale. I want to give the Charter Commission the opportunity to sell this proposal to voters, because that's what they're supposed to do. And it is totally up to voters whether or not this is the right change at the right time for the city of Portland. Whatever voters decide, I will implement when I'm reelected.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Candidate Gonzalez, would you like me to repeat the question or you could?
No, I think I have it. Thank you. So we have a hundred-year-old model of government that badly needs updating. I'm, in general, in favor of charter reform, and got to sit down with a couple of the authors of the current proposal last week. They walked me through in detail the reasons for the various pieces. I found some of that compelling. But ultimately, I'm concerned about the complexity of this that's coming before voters. I was hoping that it would be broken into two to three parts. It is, as currently planned, there will be a single up or down on a very substantial change in our government, some of which I think is going to be very difficult for even students of local government to really understand the full ramifications. And I'm also concerned about the city's ability to implement, frankly, anything right now that's complex and big. We do not have a good track record recently of implementing complex projects, solving complex problems. So I wish they had started a little more humbly, a little smaller in charter reform. I'm going to wait until October to see the alternative proposal before making a firm decision. But I do think it's important for leaders to communicate to the populace where they stand. And right now, I'm a no vote on this charter reform proposal. Again, I want to continue to listen to the debate over the coming weeks and months and look at the alternative. And if this one doesn't pass, I'm hoping that we'll have a strong alternative up in May sooner after. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two. On this question, Counselor, candidate Gonzalez, you would be first. Knowing there is an influx of immigrant and refugee populations moving to Portland, what are your plans as a city commissioner to gain cultural competency about our new arrivals? And how do you plan to address these communities' specific needs?
Yeah, you know, part, I love this question. So certainly, part of my family is not so far from the immigrant experience. And my wife was born in Venezuela, as my mother-in-law was born in Ecuador. So we're tightly tied to the immigrant story in our extended family and communities that embrace those, those that want to come, that want to contribute, that want to raise families and help to build a society. We need to welcome with open arms. Two big pieces, they go hand in hand. Language accessibility is crucial for many of these immigrant communities. So that means government needs to be speaking in the language of those engaged with it, including its services. This needs to be a table stakes issue. First and foremost, we've got to be able to speak the language of our immigrant communities. And second, cultural competency, that's just really, as meeting with people, it's understanding their spiritual take, where they're coming from in terms of their experiences with government in their home country, and really testing, you know, we may be saying something, but the way it's heard for someone new to our community may be different. And you have to do the work to engage on that. And sometimes you find surprising commonality, surprising things that pull you together. But you also en masse sometimes, boy, I think I'm saying this, but they're hearing this. And we need to, we need to find a way to get to common language and some common understanding on, on, on issues. But again, I'm not so far from the immigrant story in my family. And I think the key to a thrive in Portland in the future is that we welcome with warm arms and warm embrace those that come to contribute to our society. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardisty.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Knowing there is an influx of immigrant and refugee populations moving to Portland, what are your plans as a city commissioner to gain cultural competency about our new arrivals? And how do you plan to address these communities' specific needs?
Let me say that in my thirty-plus years as a community organizer and grassroots activist, I had spent a lot of time helping immigrants and refugees organize using their own voice. And my friend Casey Jama, when he started Center for Intercultural Organizing, was right after nine eleven. And we saw what the impact was of how communities were treated after nine eleven, how immigrant and refugee communities were being treated after nine eleven. We also saw that again when COVID hit. And we had, let's say, not the smartest people in charge at the federal level who actually really targeted Asian Pacific Islanders for, for, for why COVID was actually spreading around the planet. As a city commissioner, I prioritize getting money into the hands of Asian Pacific Islanders businesses directly, because I knew they were the hardest hit, they were the first hit, and they were the ones that were really being stigmatized by a crazy federal government at that time. We need to always make sure that we're not interpreting immigrant and refugee voices, but we are actually creating space for them to use their own voice to express what their needs are and how they want to be involved in the governance in their community. And what I have found is the needs are like every other community member. They want to live a, they want, they want housing they can afford to live in. They want to live in safety without intrusion from government. And they want to make sure that when they say, when they call their government for help, their government is there.
Thank you. Question three. Commissioner Hardisty, you will be first on this question. The state of Oregon will be receiving influx of funding from the American Rescue Plan to assist and fund community-based crisis intervention teams through Medicaid. Some look locally to the Portland Street Response as an anticipated recipient of this funding. The Portland Street Response is a program within Portland Fire Rescue which dispatches citywide to people who are possibly experiencing mental health crisis. Since the expansion of services from the greater length neighborhood to all of Portland, phone calls each month have more than quadrupled, showing the need for such a program. How can traditional, pardon me, how can additional funding from the American Rescue Plan be used to improve the Portland Street Response?
Really a great question. And you also, I think, was alluding to us being able to get funding through Medicaid, not through the American Rescue Plan. And that is a game changer, because Portland Street Response is a first responder, the first change to first responders in a hundred-plus years. And when I said, started to pilot, I started to pilot knowing that if we were going to build Portland Street Response to be a citywide first responder, we would need to look for funding outside of the city. I am uniquely positioned, because since I was a grassroots community organizer most of my life, I know how to identify money at the federal, state, and local level to actually really support innovation. And so we didn't wait to be able to get money from the federal government to pilot Portland Street Response. We didn't wait until we had federal money before we got the authority to expand it. And I want to correct one thing you said. We are not citywide yet. We're in the process of hiring people, training people, supervising people, buying equipment to make sure that we will be able to serve the entire Portland community. And so I want to caution people who say we're citywide. We're authorized budget-wise July 1st. But just like Portland Police can't hire people overnight, Portland Street Response can't either. And we want to make sure we're only sending trained mental health professionals out to deal with our most vulnerable community members.
Thank you. Candidate Gonzalez, would you like me to repeat the question or?
No, I think I have it. So I think Portland Street Response, as well as the, there's a comparable county program, venerable programs. There is a technical challenge in the way Portland Street Response is designed currently that's made it difficult to, in a little bit unclear whether it would qualify for Medicaid reimbursement. It really has to do with the way it connects to more permanent mental illness and more substantive mental illness treatment. It seems to be progressing well, so it's hopeful that gets sorted out. Do you think, one of the questions we need to tackle is whether Portland Street Response should have been limited just to homeless outreach? There was some discussion about whether, in its early days, whether it could have been more broadly defined and tie more directly to more broader mental illness treatment. And I think that's something that we should continue to evaluate as we, as we see the program experience. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to question four. Candidate Gonzalez, you will be first on this question. The city contracts with dozens of nonprofit organizations, such as the Urban League, to meet the needs of thousands of Oregonians. The services that nonprofits provide build the social fabric that holds Oregon together. Yet contracts fall short in funding housing, pardon me, in funding housing wages for nonprofit workers and in funding the operations of nonprofit organizations. Oregonians who own sixty percent to eighty percent are often unable to find an affordable path to homeownership. How do you intend to support housing wage jobs for nonprofit workers?
Yeah, I think there's two pieces here. So anytime we're talking about affordability, we, family wage jobs is essential and assuring that our employers, whether in the for-profit or nonprofit, are providing those jobs and that the pay that can support a family in the city. A number of trade unions have endorsed me precisely because my focus on protecting and providing family wage jobs and look forward to doing that with anybody who contracts with the city of Portland and needs to be, is incumbent on the city to assure those contracting with it are, in fact, committed to a pathway to the family wage jobs. And unfortunately, in the nonprofit world, we've seen the reality that often that's just not the case, that they, that they are, for a variety of reasons, unable to pay sustainable wages that can support a family in the city. So I think from a contracting perspective, we need to be stronger at the city level. The flip side of that, we are not a development conducive city for building affordable housing. We have a long way to go in compressing the process for building multifamily and single-family in the city of Portland. There's way too few permits in the pipeline, and it's a simple issue of supply and demand. If we're not building enough affordable housing, that drives up the cost for everyone, regardless of economic class, and particularly impactful of those just trying to reach homeownership for the first time. So when we talk about being able to afford a home, you got to look at it both sides, particularly for nonprofit workers. We need to make sure your employer, employers are meeting their obligations, provide working family wages. And on the other side is the city, we got to make sure we're adequately providing supply of housing. And we just are not doing that right now in the city of Portland.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardisty.
I think I have the gist of the question. Today, the average cost of a one-bedroom apartment in the city of Portland is $1,600. In January, there's a potential for housing to go up fourteen percent, I'm sorry, rent to go up fifteen, fourteen percent, which means that $1,600 a month apartment will now be $1,722 a month. We are becoming a city where people who work for a living can no longer afford to live. The solution to that is for the city to buy up and put into a public trust all the derelict buildings all over the city of Portland, restrict development to sixty percent of median family income, both for commercial and residential. So we're not just pricing people out, we're pricing small businesses. And nonprofits, the reason that governments contract with nonprofits is so that they don't have to pay living wages benefits for all the people who are involved in those contracts. And I knew that when I worked at the, I learned that when I worked at the state level, at the county level, and now here at the city. When I asked Mark Joland, what is the lowest wage worker's minimum wage? He told me that wasn't my business, even though it's the county's decision, even though the city puts $45 million every year into the joint office. A lot's going to matter who the next governor and who the next county chair is. And we need to be partners and not adversaries and fixing this real fundamental problem. But I'm optimistic we can, and I'm optimistic that if we do things differently, rather than using the same old tools that have given us crappy outcomes, we should start being innovative and do things that we know that work.
Thank you. We're going to move to our next question. I'm also going to add a note. We're moving pretty rapidly. So we're going to add one additional question to our conversation tonight, if that's okay. All right, so I'm going to move us to question five, and this will be first Commissioner Hardisty. In 2020, we saw a vocal outcry to change and reimagine how we allocate resources to ensure that all people are treated equitably under the law and to create the tools in the proverbial toolbox to handle different crises. Where do you stand with defund the police?
I have never been a fun or defund the police person. I've been a person that looks for accountability in how we invest public dollars. What I know is the way we're investing public dollars in the place, in the community, that seven hundred-plus people who testified in 2020 at the city's budget hearing echoed this over and over again. What we knew is that we were not getting a return on investment. The police play a vital role in our community safety system, but they're not the only piece. And we have invested a lot in police at the expense of some of the other parts of our community safety system. We have to think about community safety much more broadly. A great example was the work that my office did in the Mount Scott Alita neighborhood, working directly with community members who understand their community about how you reduce gun violence and how you restructure transportation and how people move so that the community benefits from it. If we go back to the same knee-jerk reactions that we have that are based on fear, rather than based on data, that, that is my fear. And so I've seen that happen. The summer of 2020 was a wonderful summer of people demanding accountability. The good news is I continue to request that accountability, both through the DOJ settlement agreement and showing up at Doc, at Judge Michael Simon, and actually refuting how wonderful we're doing as far as moving the settlement agreement into real practice. There's a lot of things we still need to do that the, our community has asked for. And the best thing we're going to do is when the And the best thing we're going to do is when the complete police oversight board is in place, that will be truly independent and owned by the community. And I want to be back to make that happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Kennedy Gonzalez, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it. Simply put, defund police has been a disaster for our community. It's been a disaster for our communities of color. We're looking at 47% of our homicides where the victims are black in Portland, Oregon in 2022, when the population is roughly 6%. And defunding the police at a time of social strife was absolutely the wrong decision. Eliminating specialists that were so effective at de-escalating violence was a horrific mistake. And so fundamentally, you need a sufficient police force to protect the innocent, in particular, protect our lowest-income Portlanders who can't just privatize the police function, who can't just easily fly to the suburbs. So it was a terrific mistake, and I hope it never happens again in Portland. Having said that, crime is multifactorial. There are multiple contributions to it, and there are multiple solutions to it. In functioning schools, economic activity, spiritual outlets, job training, and cultural institutions are all critical to getting young people on the right path, to give them something to fight for, to play for, to live for. And so while I fundamentally disagree with the defund police movement in terms of eliminating adequate public safety officers at a time of social strife, which was the pandemic, I do align on the need to invest in these other parts of our society that put young people on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things before we move to our last two questions. One, thank you for your commitment so far tonight. It's been a great conversation. I want to remind you that we have assigned actually two minutes, and we're going to increase that because we're doing good on time. You have the three minutes to respond to any of the questions that we ask. And please feel free to use all of that time, so we can be thorough and deliberate and detailed as you need to be.
You scared us. You said two minutes, we're going to be cut, so we've been obliging you.
Understood, and I appreciate that very much. It's been very concise, very tight, and I think easy for folks to keep up with what you both have to say tonight. So as we move to question six, this question will start with you, Kennedy Gonzalez. Communities displaced due to gentrification attempt to hold on to the memories of a once thriving community by returning to community landmarks. Places like Albana, Portland's historically black neighborhood, holds the Lilis Albana Park, which was the site of this year's annual Juneteenth celebration. Earlier this year, the I-5 Rose Quarter Project included expanding the highway by removing the park and adjoining Harriet Tubman Middle School, which would be the school's third relocation. How will you, as a commissioner, reconcile the development of the city to meet the needs of a growing population by prioritizing and keeping communities intact?
Yeah, it's one of the, it's one of the great challenges. How do you look forward and also preserve what's so important in the past? And I think this is an issue that I've, you know, in my run for city council, I've learned a lot about the deep connection to those neighborhoods and into the history. When you look at what, you know, the expansion of the hospital up there did and the prior expansion of the highway did. Frankly, I learned a lot from my fellow Portlanders about what hurt deep down, about the displacement of their communities and neighborhoods. And the simple answer to a complicated, long-history problem is that neighborhoods are worth fighting for and protecting. And that can place, that can be a physical space, but also for so many of our communities of color, our immigrant communities, that tie, you know, it's more than just a place. It ties you culturally, racially, religious-wise. And so I think at the end of the day, we got to protect our neighborhoods. We need to, and creating spaces where our various communities feel safe, are engaged, needs to be a spiritual guidance as we look at difficult policy decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kennedy Gonzalez. Commissioner Hardisty, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Because I got three whole minutes, so yes.
I read the whole thing. Communities displaced due to gentrification attempt to hold on to the memories of a once thriving community by returning to community landmarks. Places like Albana, Portland's historically black community, holds the Lilis Albana Park, which was the site of this year's annual Juneteenth celebration. Earlier this year, the I-5 Rose Quarter Project included expanding the highway by removing the park and adjoining Harriet Tubman Middle School, which would be the school's third relocation. How will you, as a commissioner, reconcile the development of the city to meet the needs of a growing population while prioritizing and keeping communities intact?
Yes, thank you for repeating the question. Let me start by saying Harriet Tubman should have been moved when the I-5 freeway project first started. The fact that we've allowed a generation of kids to breathe the toxics from freeway expansion for a generation is pretty appalling. I will make sure that Governor Brown's commitment to actually fund the relocation of Harriet Tubman's school happens. I supported a grant by Albana Vision Trust so that they could actually start envisioning how to build on the caps that we now have asked the environment, we have asked for in the environmental assessment that is taking place right now. I was very proud of the Albana community by standing firm to say, if there's an opportunity to undo the harm that the I-5 freeway did, why not take the time to do additional work and make that happen? If I had not been P. Black Commissioner, that would not have been a successful detour into doing something that could restore the Albana community in a very incredible way. There are also federal grants that actually allow us to actually undo harm of previous freeway construction projects. And the Albana Vision Trust fits right into that issue. But not just there, I will say 82nd Avenue with the transfer to the city. It is vital that someone who cares passionately about community members and working people actually is in charge of the Portland Bureau of Transportation to ensure this isn't another one of those major transportation projects that actually dislocates the people who were there prior to. And it's one of the most diverse areas of the city of Portland. So, you know, I got P. Black two years ago, and I will say in that period of time, I've got a preferred modified option for the I-5 Bridge. We've got the Rose Quarter Project moving, which had moved in quite some time. And we're also on path to have the most innovative 82nd Avenue redevelopment that the city of Portland has ever done. Because having someone in office who isn't tied into the way things have always been done and are willing to try new strategies and tactics has been why I have been so successful in actually changing systems in my first term.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. So we're going to go to our seventh question, but I want to give you one more note as we prepare. This will be our last question, and we'll move to closing statements. Due to time, we're actually going to add, you'll each have three minutes for your closing remarks when we get to that point. So I'll begin this question seven. I would start with you, Commissioner Hardisty. Coalition of Colors, Communities of Color 2022, addressing the Racial Wealth Gap Report, mentions there's a job growth is high in urban areas, but workplace discrimination still has profoundly negative impacts on Black, Indigenous, people of color employment retention. 74% of BIPOC employees experience discrimination at work. Despite many job opportunities, persistent racial discrimination still contributes to the wealth gap. What are your thoughts on the correlation between discrimination and employment retention? What solutions should be in place to support folks experiencing health issues and at risk for leaving their job due to discrimination?
I learned a lot when I came to the city council in January of 2019. And I will say COVID exacerbated the exodus of very talented African-American people from employment at the city of Portland. I was really shocked to hear that 43% of Black employees left the city of Portland employment from the beginning of COVID until, like, I think the end of last year when we were doing budget. I have worked very closely with CAM, the city's African-American network, because if they were not as volunteers during the deep research to point out how Black employees are, it takes them longer to get off of probation, it takes them longer to get promoted, it also, again, they don't stay. And that has been reflected in my short time as a city commissioner. And so what I attribute that to is they get into a city bureaucracy, and they do not feel that they have the support of their supervisors. And there's really no real clear strategy for how employees build that support. We have these affinity networks at the city. So just knowing what I know about what happens in the city of Portland, and that's not just employees that are hired by the city, that's in contracting. When I first got to the city of Portland, the city was patting itself on the back at what a great job they were doing in diversifying opportunities for communities of color. But it took me being elected to the city council to ask the question, well, how many Black people? How many Native Americans? How many Latinx? And the more I ask that question and expect it there to be a breakdown rather than a alphabet soup of how great the city was doing, that's when we find out Black people do not get access to contracts at the city of Portland. So we have a lot more work to do before the city can live up to its motto. Its motto about being a model place to work. We have racial issues because there's no one in the United States of America that does not have racial justice issues in their workplace. The question is, who will actually make sure that they're working to resolve those issues? Or who will actually try to push it under the rug and not address it? And I will tell you, before I got there, there went a whole lot of conversations about what are we going to do to stop the exodus of Black employees and other employees of color?
Thank you. Kennedy Gonzalez, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it. I mean, the racial discrimination in the workforce is unfortunately a terrible burden for a substantial number of our members of the community. That's a reality. Some of the things that we can do to tackle are as follows. While the city with respect to those that contract with it has done a reasonably good job of mandating diversity and ownership of those organizations, it hasn't always done a good job of making sure who they sub to also reflects that diversity requirement. Further, it's one thing to have ownership, but if the rank-and-file employees and contractors don't meet certain diversity standards, it really undermines the goals. We've seen too many cases recently of contracts being awarded to out-of-state firms because they check, ownership checked a diversity box, but we didn't go down the level and make sure the employee base was local and is carrying the full water on diversity representation. So I think that's important because we were talking about actual discrimination. When you're talking about your contractors, are they retaining their people of color? And that's, that matters, and it's beyond ownership. It's the whole team there. I think that's also important when we're talking about how we look to our trade partners, our labor partners. We have some incredibly diverse unions in our, in our city and in our region, but they often get excluded from city contracts that go out of state. I think that's problematic. Again, when we talk about diversity, we need to be talking about local diversity when we're talking about the city of Portland. But last but not least, you know, I come from two worlds. I've got an Anglo side of the family and a Latino side of the family. And I think it's important that as a community, we continue to embrace our broader diversity. And that's true in how we engage culturally, and it's true how we engage in the workforce. So one last piece to hearken back to earlier is the importance for cultural competency and really understanding where people are coming from, doing the work, spending the time. You know, the city may think it's doing all right in XYZ, but that's not necessarily what your employees or your trade partners are hearing. And spending the good, spending the time finding that common ground, I think is very, very important and is a key to confronting some of the more serious workforce issues. And I said last, but I'm going to add one more. You know, the importance of a strong public education system in the city of Portland, strong apprenticeship programs as a crucial part to giving our young people of all colors access to employment opportunities and career advancement. So we need to protect those at all costs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kennedy Gonzalez. And thank you both for your responses. We will now do closing statements in reverse alphabetical order. And now Commissioner Hardisty will deliver her closing statement. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
I want to end where I started, thanking the Urban League for having this forum. An educated voter is a good voter. This is going to be a critical election season. I am here to sell you hope. Hope that as a community collectively, we can bring everyone back from the devastation of the last three years. It's easy to sell fear. I know people walk out of their house and they're terrified by what they see. Unfortunately, what the city has done up until this point is not actually solving the problem. We are relocating suffering people from one location to another. And that is not, we're never going to get out of the crisis we're in. I have a plan for revitalizing downtown that includes the city, actually land banking, land downtown, and restricting development to 60% of median family income so that we could once again have a thriving downtown that people at all income levels could live, work, and worship, and play. It is important that we build a city all over the city of Portland that people at every income level can live and prosper. What kept me in Portland for 30-plus years was when I got here, you could listen to live music every night. If you go to my website, please, at joannforportland.com, and see the list of accomplishments that we've made. But I would never say that my office did it on its own. Everything we've done has been in partnership with community and asking you for your vote so that I can continue to institutionalize some of the incredible innovative changes to policy that you have seen in the city in quite some time. I have used my one term at city council very well. And it tickles me when people say I am responsible for all the ills in the city of Portland, yet I've only had one term. And true, I am the senior member, other than the mayor, on this particular council. But if you watch, I've done not only, I've done what I've said, and I've done it with community and with your help. We can build the kind of Portland back where everybody gets to come back. And we won't be building a community of fear, but a community of, a community of opportunity and prosperity for all Portlanders. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Election Day is November 8th. Please educate yourself and please vote and tell your friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Next up, Kennedy Gonzalez. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
I want to thank again the Urban League, our moderator, and all the listeners listening in tonight. So appreciate your engagement in this crucial election. Fundamentally, I'm not here to pander. I'm not here to preach. I'm really here because I think our city needs protection and some restoration. And so that's what I'm very much focused on as a city commissioner. I'm a proud Papa of three, three Portland-born and raised children, multicultural children. And I really want to build a better Portland for them. Some of that's restoring some of the things that were good about Portland that we really struggled with. This was a place where you could have civic engagement. You could talk about tough issues in a civic way. And I want to restore that. And I want to restore that kind of rhetoric, that kind of communication, that kind of bridge building. That doesn't mean all the things in the past were perfect for Portland. We had a lot of problems and some of those included racism and structural problems and inequality. But the path I'm looking forward to the city, for the city right now at this point in 2022 is to restore those things that were good about the city, but also to build a more post pandemic, a more beautiful Portland post pandemic. And while I'm very, very focused on crime and homelessness and impact on our neighborhoods both, I think it's deeply unfortunate that we can, that we can have kids moving here from Idaho and Texas and do what they do on the streets and we don't care about, we don't take good enough care about our, of our Black children or Brown children that are raised right here in the city. I, I take exception to that and I'll be very focused on centering our kids in, in Portland going forward. Having said all of that, we got to go through a restoration process for the city. But we've got to make this space to vision again as to what we want the city to be coming out of this pandemic. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity for all of us to define what a city should be. And I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bathwater when we go through that process. But I do think we need to make the space to, to really do the hard work envisioning what cities should be in our new realities. So I then, I want to thank you for your time for listening in. And I promise as a commissioner, I'm going to listen to all sides of the city from all the different perspectives and do what I think's best to drive our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. As the Urban League's City of Portland Commissioner Forum comes to an end, I want to give a special thanks to our audience members who submitted questions and our partners at LNS Captioning and Open Signal who are airing this Urban League Forum. We thank you, the community partners who supported this event as well. Thank you again to candidates, Commissioner Joanne Hardisty, candidate Renee Gonzalez for participating today. We can, we hope you continue to stay well on the campaign trail. I want to extend my appreciation to our co-hosts as well and the community groups who helped uplift civic participation in the Black community. Quick applause. Audience, please remember that the Urban League is a nonprofit organization that relies upon donations to be able to serve the community. Learn more about our fantastic programs and powerful advocacy by visiting our website at ulpdx.org. That's ulpdx.org. If you are able, I invite you to donate on September 22nd at 6:00 PM. Urban League is hosting their Equal Opportunity Day. This virtual event is an opportunity to gather with Black leaders, partners, elected officials, friends and all those dedicated to empowering African Americans and others to achieve equality in education, employment, health, economic, security and quality of life. It provides a forum for the Urban League to educate civic community and business leaders on the critical needs facing the region's Black and African American community. All funds raised through this event will provide crucial unrestricted revenue that directly supports all of our wraparound programs and services impacting more than 10,000 individuals every year. Your support is an investment in our Black community, in our robust wraparound programming that empowers communities and changes lives. We will place registration links in the chat. The event will be streamed on Urban League's Portland Facebook and YouTube pages on the 22nd of September. So please join. On behalf of the Urban League President, the Kingate Harmon Johnson, the Board of Directors and all our members, I thank our audience for participating today. If you are not a member of the Urban League, I would welcome you to join or renew your annual membership. Visit the website at ulpdx.org. Join the movement for justice and equity in Oregon. Also, if you need assistance voting during this primary or registering during the general staff, during the general, rather, staff at the Urban League are ready to talk with you. Reach out via our website, social media, or call 503-280-2600 for assistance. I am Justice Raji, Director of Reimagine Oregon, and I say good night. Thank you.
Thank you all.